Good evening and welcome to the Village of Westmont Committee of the Whole Meeting for April 15th. Tax filing deadline for everyone unfortunately. I'd like to ask our clerk to first take our roll call.
Mayor Ron's playing math. The clerks here. Trustee Emery.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Forsley.
Here.
Trustee Klebenow is absent tonight. Trustee Scott is absent tonight. Trustee Seneca.
Is here.
Manager Searle.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimball. Public Works Director May. Police Chief Mulhern. Deputy Police Chief Gunther. Fire Chief Trout.
Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item for us are the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting, April 1st, and board meeting on April 5th, 2010. Any corrections to be reported to the clerk? There are none. Moving right along, and I believe we have one open forum request.
Yes, we do, and where did I put it?
Somewhere.
It's here, it's here, I know it's here. Sorry about that.
That's fine.
Very good.
Okay.
Bob Mueller from 44 West 59th Street Apartment D., Westmont.
Hi.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I'd like to ask, are there any questions or comments about the red light presentation I did at the previous meeting? Okay, then let me proceed with tonight's topic. Many of you probably know that there was a township meeting on Tuesday. You know, we made it famous because about four years ago, we put an anti-war resolution on the ballot, and actually it passed in Downers Grove Township, 55 to 45. Ever since then, it's been the best-attended township meeting in probably the whole state of Illinois. And we get voted down every time, but basically, we do practice democracy. But township meeting always inspires one subject, and it's, of course, a constitutional issue, the separation of church and state. For many years, the Fish Pantry was located in the Downers Grove Township building, and that's a fine service. Unfortunately, they had a religious symbol outside the building. I constantly objected to that, got ignored, but the Fish Pantry is now moving anyway, so that became moot. But the township seems to have a very bad lawyer, because when he wrote up the rights and powers of the township board, he said the township has a right to maintain any cemetery in the district. And I said that would give them the right to maintain religious cemeteries, which obviously they do not have the right to do. So the board offered to modify their resolution, say, well, we meant any township cemeteries. So they put that out there, and it got voted down. So obviously, Downers Grove Township has a real problem with understanding separation of church and state. You know, I mean, we have talked about it. Once a while, a trustee will mention some fundraiser that a religious institution is doing. Realistically, that's not appropriate, it's a minor violation, so, you know, you can't, you let it go. But, you know, basically, two things also happened today, or actually in the next week. Next Thursday, we'll be down in Springfield again lobbying for our civil union bill, which basically is a separation of church and state issue. We're not sure why we have to ask for the rights to have our families recognized, but obviously, we do. So we do. And we keep the pressure on. And as the mayor said, today's tax day. Well, if I remember right, when I asked the board several years ago to pass a resolution supporting civil unions, they came back with the idea that this was an unfunded mandate. Well, let me tell you, for my tax form, this is not an unfunded mandate. We pay a lot of taxes, we do deserve rights. We'll be down in Springfield. It's House Bill 2234, we're again asking the General Assembly to pass. It's a basic bill, and as I told Virginia, I'm gonna give a plug to Iowa. Iowa does allow gay marriage. It's way ahead of us in the Midwest. We're supposedly a progressive state. Let's be progressive, let's, you know, pass a resolution recommending the civil union bill be passed, and, you know, let's get done this year. Thank you.
Thank you. That is our only open forum request this evening.
Yes.
Of course. Mayor, I just have one thing that I wanted to mention right now, and that is, recently we received a copy of the DuPage Senior Citizens Council newsletter, and lo and behold, inside is a very nice article about the Westmont firefighters.
And a picture.
And a wonderful picture of, see, there's five firefighters and Frank Trout in the pictures. They volunteered a helping hand for the chore days for the senior citizen council, and went in on their lunch hour and cleaned up the yard of a senior citizen. I'm not sure what town you were in, but they serve all different towns. It was right here in Westmont. It's a great article, and not only you, but I'm sure there were a lot of other teams on that day all over the county that were doing this type of work, so we applaud you and your firemen for volunteering on that day and working to help that senior citizen. So, thank you very much. That's all that I have right now. And moving right along, our village clerk.
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Village attorney?
Nothing tonight.
Village manager?
Thank you. Just a couple of things, I would like an executive session for personnel following the regular meeting. And also, I passed out a supplemental purchase order list with two purchase orders. And those of you that were at the Public Works Committee meeting earlier this week, we talked about this particular project. This is the Water Main Project on Burlington. We had originally anticipated that these were going to be purchase orders on the next committee of the whole agenda. Today, we find out because of timing issues, we need to go ahead and get these on. I just wanted to remind the board that even though these are large purchase orders, one of them is $999,999, and the other one is $319,323.72. Had to be broken up because the way our system handles large contract amounts, there's a limit at $1 million. This is part of a loan that we're being reimbursed from the federal government through the state, so it's not money that we have to expend without, you know, getting that back. So I would ask if we could add that to the agenda for Monday, and I know if you have any specific questions, Public Works Director May is also here, and he can answer them.
Any questions, comments? Thank you. Moving right along, trustee item, trustee Fleming.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Trustee Seneca.
Just a quick comment that all of our prayers and thoughts go out to the Johannick family as the chief is gravely ill. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Forsley.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Trustee Emery.
And likewise, all of our thoughts and prayers go out to the family of Tara Alamilah, who met a tragic death last weekend. For those of you who knew her or knew her three children, there's been a memorial fund established by the Chicago Zoological Society, which is actually the formal name of Brookfield Zoo where Tara worked. So their information is both in the progress on their website, or you can just call Brookfield Zoo, and they'll let you know about it.
Okay. Thank you. New business, Misericordia Tag Days. Board to consider request for Misericordia to conduct their annual Tag Days Fund fundraising drive at Ogden and Cass Avenue, Ogden Avenue and Pas Meneli Drive, and at the Jewel Store with the manager's permission, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM distributing tags and lollipops while collecting donations in the village on Friday, April 23rd, and Saturday, April 24th. Annual request. Any questions?
Is this one of those items that we approve every year again?
Yeah.
That maybe we might be able to just have them contact through the clerk's office and do it that way, or maybe do it for a couple of years, instead of it coming back to the agenda every year?
The deputy asked me about that, and I said we'd talk about doing that.
Yeah, I thought, I think you're right. I think it's one of the groups that we said.
Every year.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, just.
You just want to stake, go ahead and handle it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's something that could be handled that way. There are several other items that we've handled that way also.
Right.
It's just gonna require a simple change to the village ordinances, which now require board approval, and handle it administratively, and probably build in language if it's a Westmont conducted event by a Westmont organization. I don't know if you want to put that it has to be an annual event, but trying to establish some parameters for it.
So they don't have to come back to us again? It's, the time limit is, there's no time limit on it?
Well, they would just do it through the clerk's office.
They would just go through the clerk's office.
Yeah.
Might add, if, not that we've ever had any problems, but if anything were to arise, then it would be brought back to the board for discussion.
Absolutely.
Next item, 5725 South Womack, Solly subdivision. Board to consider request for a 24-month extension of the variances previously granted to develop or enable Solly.
Good evening and happy spring, and thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. It's been a year, at least, since I was here last. Since that time, we've managed to work with an engineering firm, in tech engineering firm, that's been working with the engineering department here at the village, and we've gone through a lot of revisions and working on the project. We've got Flag Creek to approve our plans, and I heard from Mr. Jacoby there that he approved our plans for that. However, because of the current economic status in the country and in the area, I respectfully request you to grant us 24 months' extension on the variance that we obtained, so we can prepare, we are in the final stages of preparing, but we can be ready when the economy starts. Right now, there isn't any short-term chance that we can do anything successfully economically feasibly.
Questions from board members? Comments from staff?
Just to kind of reiterate on what Dr. Sally mentioned, he is going through the permitting process right now. So he has made his submittal, that's working its way through engineering review as we speak, and I think, timing-wise, it's just an issue of waiting for the economy to turn before he feels comfortable moving forward with actually doing the improvements and either developing or selling those lots to other developers.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Thank you for coming in, you'll be on our agenda for consideration Monday.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next item, liquor license to Class 9C Green Meadows Golf Course. Board to consider increasing the number of Class 9C liquor licenses by one, to allow the liquor commissioner at his discretion to issue a liquor license to Green Meadows Golf Course, located at 18 West 201 West 63rd Street.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce, this is Dean Westrom. He's the Director of Golf Operations for the Green Meadows Golf Course. By way of background, the Green Meadows Golf Club is owned and operated by the Forest Preserve District of DuPage County, who also operates the Maple Meadows Golf Club in Wooddale and the Oak Meadows Golf Club in Addison. Both those golf clubs do have liquor licenses currently in place and valid. The Green Meadows Golf Club is requesting the issuance of a Class 9C liquor license, which is stated as a municipal corporation operating a public golf course, provided that the sale of liquor are made for consumption only within the clubhouse or on the golf course itself. We would like the board to consider the following facts for the request. All fees have currently been paid to the clerk's office, the golf club has a proper and valid liquor liability insurance, Steve Watson has reviewed and approved the floor plan, and all servers have been Basset trained and certified. Pursuant to a background investigation, my investigation has not found anything that would prevent the issuance of a liquor license by the mayor should the board choose to increase the number of liquor licenses by one. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Westrom for any questions and comments from the board.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Dean Westrom, I am the Director of Golf Operations for the Forest Preserve District. I do hold the liquor licenses for Maple Meadows and Oak Meadows as well. So we are just coming before you today to ask for your permission for a liquor license for Green Meadows. It is a nine-hole course down on 63rd Street, which most of you are all aware. And right now, it's our contention to only sell beer and wine, and maybe like Mike's Hard Lemonade, we will not have a full bar, and it'll be more canned and bottled, you know, plastic bottled, you know, types of alcoholic beverages, which we're used to selling and managing, so I'd be happy to answer any questions if you may have any.
Do you foresee anybody, like, in some of the golf courses that are eighteen holes, somebody driving around selling the liquor, or would this be strictly sold through the clubhouse?
Right now, we don't have any intentions at all of having a beverage cart like we do at the other courses. Because it's such a short course, and the close proximity to the clubhouse, we're only gonna sell the beer and wine out of the clubhouse.
Jim, did you look and see how far it is from the skate park to the golf course? What's the proximity?
The proximity is, I would have to break it down by probably feet. They are adjacent properties. I don't know the exact distance, but it's probably in excess of a few hundred yards, if not more, to the actual clubhouse. The skate park is enclosed by a fence, and there is a lot of separation, there's a parking lot in between skate park and the business itself with the golf course.
Okay, just so our little skate park guys aren't tempted to go over and see what they can pilfer?
Sure.
It is our plan, too. We did get some communication with the, actually with the Westmont Fire Department, which we're upgrading our detection, our fire detection system, which will now be, once it's complete, will be monitored by your department and our, we do have a, we are installing a full security system with cameras to actually monitor and to guard against theft and any type of burglary action, you know, on the alcohol, which we do at our other facilities as well. And that's more of a policy within the district that we do that, but it's also to be in compliance with different, you know, village ordinances as well.
So you have the same type of security system at the other two courses?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your first presentation. Very well done.
Nice course.
Next item, 276 East Ogden, 600 Black Hawk Drive, Audi. Board to consider approving a final plat of subdivision request to consolidate three existing lots into one.
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Paul Scott, I'm from Seaton Engineering, representing Auto Nation.
Okay.
We're seeking the final approval of the plat.
Input from staff?
This is just a matter of course, the applicant is through the engineering permitting process, and you've probably already noticed that the ME's building has been demolished and construction is underway, so we're seeing movement already, and in order to get the final plat approved to consolidate the parcels at the county level, we're just requesting your authorization this evening.
When, when do you expect the expansion to be, project to be completed? Kind of timelines?
You know, I don't know what the contractor is in mind, but I'm sure it's as soon as possible. Certainly within the next year.
Okay. That's the only question I have. Anyone else have any further questions? Okay, hearing no other questions, you'll be on our agenda for consideration Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Sure, you'll be a wonderful addition to the, help with the automobile sales tax revenue for the Village of Westmont once it's completed.
Yep.
Next, zoning code text amendment. Board to consider amending code to add language requiring petitioners to pay a specific amount into the dedicated P1 Limited Business District Parking Fund for each parking space waived by variance.
Which one of us should go? Talk first.
I was waiting for the nod from the.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Fred. Automatically thought you'd.
Thank you, Your Honor. Staff is pleased to present this recommendation, which kind of represents the final piece of the puzzle that resulted from our downtown parking study from Rich &amp; Associates a couple of years ago now. And it, in doing some research, we kind of were under the mistaken impression that we had ratified this particular piece of the puzzle, and we found that even though it had been to the P&amp;Z Commission on a couple, three different occasions, we had never had any formal action from the village board. So we respectfully present this for the board's consideration this evening, knowing full well that there are some pros and cons to these types of charges for per-space variance, parking space variance costs. We talked at the P&amp;Z hearings, and I think with the village board previously, that in a down economic time, if we make that fee too high, well, you can discourage investment in new business startups by certain businesses. If you don't have a fee, then you have nothing to contribute into the fund that ultimately may allow you to purchase additional land or build new parking lots for the benefit of the downtown business district in the future. So we submit this for the board's input and discussion, and we'd be pleased to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Questions?
Just, Fred, just understanding the chart here, not many communities have this, it looks like. Surrounding communities, is that correct?
Not all do. Some do and some don't.
Just depends on your needs.
And we, again, certainly don't want to get this thing out of hand where it becomes an impediment to the development of new businesses, but we think some nominal charge would be advisable.
I think, I think the numbers that you have come up with are fair and reasonable in today's economy, and not to discourage anybody.
No questions?
Nope.
Unbelievable. Thank you.
You do such a good job.
Moving right along. Proclamation. Board to consider motion to declare April 18 through April 24th as National Volunteer Week in Westmont. And the proclamation is National Volunteer Week, April 18th through the 24th. Whereas experience teaches us, teaches us that government by itself cannot solve all of our nation's social problems, and whereas our country's volunteer force of over 61 million people is a great treasure, as we well understand here in Westmont, and whereas volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive village and nation overall, and whereas it is the duty of every citizen and leader to honor our dedicated volunteers and celebrate the many volunteer programs that contribute to the quality of life in Westmont and surrounding communities. Now therefore be it resolved, I, William Ron, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim April 18th through the 24th, 2010, as National Volunteer Week. And the Village of Westmont, in honor of all those volunteers who give of their time to make our village a place to shop, live, and raise a family. And isn't that, isn't that the truth? We couldn't do what we do with all, without the hundreds and hundreds of volunteers that come forward every year to help at all of our many, many activities. Any questions, comments, remarks? Moving right along. Proclamation. Board to consider approval of a proclamation honoring Westmont's village clerk and declaring the week of May 2nd to May 8th as Village Clerk's Week.
Gee, should we?
Proclamation for Village Clerk's Week.
Are we supposed to vote now?
Through May 8th.
We're bad.
Well, you can, but it won't count until Monday. Proclamation Village Clerk's Week, May 2nd through May 8th. Whereas the office of village clerk is a time-honored and vital part of local government that exists in countries throughout the world, and whereas the office of the village clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the village clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas village clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the village clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas village clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of village clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it is the, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of our, our village clerk. Now therefore, I, William Ron, Mayor of Westmont, do hereby proclaim May 2nd to May 8th as Village Clerk's Week. And further extend appreciation to our village clerk, Virginia Simskey, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities that they represent. Any comments?
Take out the part about the oldest among public servants.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not so sure about that.
I don't think that's appropriate, Virginia.
I had a little question about that one myself when I read it. Made sure that I read it exactly the way it was written. Thank you. Moving right along. Opposition to abolishing the DuPage Water Commission Resolution. Board to consider approving a resolution opposing Illinois Senate Bill 580 and House Bill 5552 abolishing the DuPage Water Commission and transferring duties and powers to DuPage County.
It's been well documented in the press, the recent financial problems that the DuPage Water Commission has been experiencing, and in part, in reaction to that, Senator Dan Cronin has introduced, originally introduced the Senate Bill 580, which would abolish the commission and give over control to DuPage County. And the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference has taken a position in opposition to that. We don't believe that that, you know, is the solution to the problems that have occurred there. This particular resolution is modeled after one that was recently approved by the city of Darien, and staff is just suggesting this as a possibility of stating our position. We don't think it's the solution to the problems that the commission has, has experienced recently. I do know that today, the Senate bill portion was on the third reading in the Senate, and that passed, and I think, on the House side, I think it's in the Rules Committee. So I know that both the mayor and Fred were down in Springfield here the last couple of days, so you guys probably have some insight on where this seems to be going.
Yes, we were, and we did have a chance yesterday evening to talk to Senator Cronin, and at that time, he indicated that he would be willing at some point in time to talk with, with us, with the DuPage mayors concerning working out some kind of a compromise. One of the largest problems with the, with the dissolution- One of the largest problems with the dissolution of, just one of many, is the cost of extending, Fred, if I don't get this just exactly right, extending the water service into unincorporated areas. We just want to make sure that if that is, is done, if the county takes over, that that will be paid for by the individuals who will be receiving the water, and that will not be the burden of the villages, any of the villages that are part of the DuPage Water Commission.
And just to elaborate on the mayor's comments there, the part of the problem, particularly onerous part of Senator Cronin's legislation is that we would be required to extend water to unincorporated areas without annex, without requiring annexation or being enabled to establish a special service area to offset the cost of that. And kind of the position of the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference officially has been that if the county wants to extend water service to unincorporated areas of the county, let the county pay for it. Don't make it an unfunded mandate on municipalities. We've already got enough of those. We found Senator Cronin last evening to be receptive to continued discussion about this, and I'm planning to send him an email here in the next 24 hours to confirm the conversation that we had with him, in the hopes that he would honor that request to take out this particularly onerous part of the legislation. On the way back from Springfield today, we did contact Mark Beloga, who is the Director of the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference. He's indicated that as the, as a part of the agreed-upon bill process, they have already started those negotiations with the framers of the legislation, with the party leaders, and they have tentatively agreed to remove that part about requiring the village to pay for the cost of, of extension of water service without requiring annexation. Again, we remain very, very strongly opposed to that particular principle.
Thank you, Fred. Next item, Finance Ordinance Number 24.
Wait for reading.
Request the wait for reading. Purchase orders, you have the additional ones requested by the manager. Anything else to come before the board? If not, I have undertaken a motion going to executive session as requested by the manager regarding personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Forsley?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Thank you. We are adjourned to executive session.